All right, thank you, Brian, and thank you, everyone, for being here tonight for this November 22, 2021, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We do not have any proclamations tonight, so I will go ahead and call this meeting to order, and Dr. Andy Wolfe is going to do our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
May we pray. God, and Father of us all, we pounce to give you thanks for all your good gifts to us. You've breathed into each of us a gift of life, surrounded us with your care. We're thankful for the good earth that you've entrusted to our care. We're thankful for homes and families that nurture us, and we're grateful for the gift of each other. May we wisely use all you have shared with us. You've called us to love neighbor, to live in mutual concern and care for one another. Give us the wisdom to seek that common good, to live in mutual respect for one another. We pray especially for your wisdom, your guidance, and support in this time of meeting. Grant to each the ability to listen carefully, discern, and to decide wisely as we seek to build a better community for all. May our work be done here with a spirit of humility, knowing that we are all your children, for it is in your name that we pray. Amen.
Everyone, please face the flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, at the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Wolfe, we appreciate it. Ms. Salter, if you will, please call roll.
Yes, sir. Councilor Gualtney?
Here.
Councilor Gier?
Here.
Councilor Alamon? Councilor Wilberton? Councilor Sims?
Here.
Councilor Jones?
Here.
Councilor Smith?
Here.
Councilor Nels?
Here.
Councilor Andrus?
Here.
Councilor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
All right, you got two out, but you got nine here, see, settle for them.
Great, thank you very much. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our regular meeting of November 8, 2021. Mr. Sims had noted one item that has been amended, but otherwise I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of those amended minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualtney, all in favor? Any opposed? That is nine to zero. All right, next, we have board vacancies. We did have a deadline today for the Ward 1 HEC appointment. I know we have an incumbent that's interested, but may not quite have gotten to it yet, so what I would suggest is that we just extend this out to our next meeting on December 6th. Thank you. Is that okay with y'all?
Andy's gonna go next door and get the resume.
I'm eating on him too, Willie, because I meant to last month.
Got it. So we'll extend that to December 6 at 4:30.
And Matt Rich is going to too, so we'll triple team.
Okay. And I think that's the only board vacancy for tonight unless anyone else has anything that I don't know about. Next, we've got a few additions to the agenda. First, in addition to the committee referral agenda, this will be 29-11-21, request for consideration for work in the right-of-way at 126 Barber's Court, brought to us by our city engineer, Cale Smith. Then we have three items that are going to be added to other new business. The first is 28-11-21, request to authorize the mayor to sign contract for temporary construction easement for striping changes at the public's entrance of Greensprings Highway, brought to us by Berkeley Squires, our public works director. Next is 13-10-21, which is going to be to amend the bid opening date for Lancaster sidewalks to December 17, 2021, at 4:40. And 14-10-21, an amendment to the bid opening for Salter sidewalks for December 17, 2021, at 4:31. All right, so with those items, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nels, second by Ms. Gier, all in favor? Any opposed? That is also nine to zero. That brings us to the consent agenda tonight. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the same. Second. Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Mr. Sims, all in favor? Any opposed? That is also nine to zero. All right, which brings us to old business agenda. The first item is 15-08-20, request for consideration of a memorial donation policy, brought to us by Councilors Andrus and Smith. This item was carried over from our last meeting on November 8, but Ms. Smith, do you have a report?
We carried it over in committee again because we made some changes to it, so we are gonna wait and have it in committee. I mean, we'd like it to go back into committee so that we could just review it one more time before we...
So do you want me to carry it over here so that it's here on the next agenda, or do you want me to just send it back to committee?
Y'all sent it out and y'all carried it over to your council.
That's right, yeah. Send it back to committee.
Okay, so we will send that back without objection to special issues.
Thank you.
All right, next item, 08-11-21, public hearing set for tonight for the removal of five protected trees from 1505 Manhattan Street as required by the Tree Conservation Ordinance Number 2422, brought to us by Thomas Erwin and Scott Cook of our inspections Department. I think we'll start with a report from special issues.
Yes. The committee met last week and heard about the issue from Mr. Cook and the applicants. We voted five to zero to refer it back out to full counsel without a recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
All right, thank you very much, and I believe we have Mr. Cook here, ready to speak to it as well.
Yes, sir. During the special issues committee, the homeowner, Thomas Erwin, had not opened up his email from me, so he was not aware of the meeting. All I was able to do is read to special issues committee, his reason for removing the trees was home and garage removal, which I was assuming had something to do with tearing down the house or moving the house or something, building a new one. He did call me, we had a nice conversation today. This house, he didn't tell me exactly how long it's been in the family, but his grandparents lived there, so he has seen these trees grow from almost nothing up to full mature height. I went out there today and looked at them, he told me the trees, one of them was leaning toward a neighbor's house, and they're, you know, very concerned. Some of them are in decline, which I saw that. His plans are probably within the next six months to renovate the house, and probably if he was not able to cut them down, probably the renovation alone would get into the roots and disturb them, and they would even be in further decline and die. So, you know, if he follows through and allowed to cut the trees, then adding on his renovation and all his work will trigger having to plant new trees, which we'll see that it's done once his renovation is complete. And he is not able to be here tonight, he's out of state.
Okay, so just to be clear, the trees are not down yet?
That's correct.
Okay. So, which we appreciate.
Yeah, and the only reason we're here is it's four, more than four.
More than four.
Yeah, regardless of the condition of the trees, it's more than four.
Since they are not down yet, will the new ordinance apply to these trees?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because once he comes and gets his building permit, then we'll be under the new ordinance.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It...
We're under the old ordinance now for cutting the trees.
I understand, I'm just trying, so this item really needs to be handled under the new ordinance?
Well, because he applied for the permit under the old ordinance, that's why we're here tonight, because under the new ordinance, he does not have to come before you to cut more than four trees.
I guess my question is, which triggers the, which is the trigger, Mr. Kendrick, the application or the cutting of the trees?
When did he apply?
10, 20th, 20th of October.
It's not prohibited any longer, it's a time of your approval, your approval really doesn't happen.
Well, that's sort of my thought is...
Well, I knew his application.
And then he's, right, so to me, because the trees have not been taken down, this should be handled by the new ordinance.
So, would it be appropriate to move, well, but I can't drop his application.
Well, no, we need to have the public hearing before we do anything, but I just want to make sure we're sort of on the same page about it, so...
And the reason it was more specific with it coming under the old ordinance is because, number one, he submitted it while that was there.
Sure.
And at the time, we hadn't adopted the new ordinance, and we didn't know whether it was going to be adopted or how long that was going to string out, so we wanted to get it before it...
Yeah, I'm sorry, it makes complete sense why we're here, because no one knew exactly what was going to happen until very recently, so if it had not passed, this would need to be dealt with, and we certainly wouldn't want to hold him up, but since it did pass, I think that it is now handled by the new ordinance. But let me do this, let me go ahead and open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone to speak for or against this item tonight.
Mr. Cook, is there a sign and sheet up there?
I'm sorry, what?
Is there a sign and sheet?
Yes, yes.
Okay, seeing no one, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any comments from council? Or a motion?
I'm not even sure what the right motion is.
You can move...
Move to drop it?
Yeah.
I've moved to drop. And then you can, I guess we can communicate with Mr. Erwin that because the new ordinance is in place, his application wasn't necessary, is no longer necessary.
The new application is necessary.
Yes, right.
Correct, an application under the new ordinance is necessary, but the...
But this part of it's not, to move to drop.
All right, so we have a motion to drop from Ms. Smith, do we have a second?
Second, sorry.
Second from Ms. Andrus, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero, and that item is dropped. All right, next item, 09-11-21, public hearing set for tonight for removal of nine protected trees from 1796 Murray Hill Road as required by Tree Conservation Ordinance Number 2422, brought to us by the Ginnells and Scott Cook, and we'll start with another report from special issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, second song, second verse, same song, second verse. Voted five to zero to refer this item out back to full counsel without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
All right, Mr. Cook, anything to add?
I guess it's a ditto from the last one.
Same thing, right?
Same thing, I mean, that's...
Apply for it under the old ordinance, the new ordinance passed, and now that's where we are before the trees are taken out.
And I think they're here.
They are here, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so let me open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone to speak for or against this item. Y'all are welcome to come up if you want to.
Just sign in, just like you did in the committee meeting, get an ID, and just tell us what you're doing. Brian, do you have those pictures from committee meeting to put up?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you.
I don't know if y'all were looking at something. Oh, okay. The structures on that hillside pose the issue with the stone structure and the pool and our corner of the house is there also, and we didn't have the insight to remove them at the time of construction when it would have been much cheaper, and so now we have to get a crane that will, a 60-ton crane that extends from the street and basically removes those on that hillside. The only question, and that was ground cover that's already on that hillside, the tree guy that came out, I did not meet him, but mentioned vegetation along that hillside to prevent any erosion, which there's more than plenty of, and when you remove hardwood trees, all the root system, you're not removing any of that, so I don't think we'll have any erosion issues. And what he did not realize when he came is our lot extends further up that hill behind Ms. Nels' house, and she's part of it, so there's a lot of trees there, so...
And I'll just note this, the HEC has sent an email to me noting that Bram has been out, our arborist has been out to look at it and has no issue with what you're proposing. I think the only sort of issue is the procedural matter at this point of approval under which ordinance, and so, again, I think this is sort of the, well, let me ask this, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? All right, let me close the public hearing. I think this is probably falls under the same thing as the old one, if we're going to handle, whatever way we handle these, I think we need to handle them consistently.
So that I can just say move to drop. So because of the new ordinance is in place, you don't have to get permission, you just have to file a different application, so I think Mr. Cook can probably get you the new application to file, but you're good to go.
The only issue for us is the tree people have now been delayed six weeks, and they're coming next Monday.
You guys start the process all over again.
So why would we do that when we applied when this was in place?
Yeah.
Y'all had that paperwork for two months?
Well, I understand we haven't had the paperwork up here. Somebody has, but we haven't, so here's the issue, is if we approve it, that approval is meaningless because the ordinance that we would be approving it under no longer exists, and so for you to remove trees under that ordinance, the approval that we would give wouldn't mean anything.
But you didn't tell us that when we submitted the application.
Well, at the time the application was submitted, the ordinance was simply pending before us, it hadn't been approved yet.
I mean, we did what you told us to do.
You did, this is not, this is not your fault, and I apologize that this is the way that it's worked out, but I don't know that we have any authority to do anything with it because under the new ordinance, we don't have the approval of this.
Can I ask this question, Scott? Where's the new application? Is it online?
No, it would be in the inspections department, zoning department.
Is there a way that we could get that and get that for him tonight so that he can get that? We cannot. Is Mr. Pu is not here?
Yeah, Mr. Gunnell. So what would be the delay if we drop this and he has to, yeah, I hate when you say that, he has to start over, I mean, is there not any way to utilize what we've already overseen?
Sorry, been submitted.
So what would be the, walk me through the new timeframe with the new ordinance?
Wow. He's gonna have to list every tree on his property by, by names and the size. It's a lengthy process, and it's gonna be handled by the arborist.
Even though the arborist has already been out and looked at it and approved it?
Yeah.
There has to be some other solution here in light of you already being in the middle of this application, and...
I'm not here to, I'm trying to get this resolved.
Do you have an idea on a way to expedite this?
And I may be wrong, but y'all listen to me, you will. When someone comes in and gets a building permit, and we're under, you know, Building Code 2020 or something, or 2020, he's expected to build that building under that code. If he's building that building under that code, and even though we may change it, while he's in the process...
He was approved under it.
...still look at it as the old procedure, having to build this building under that, we're not gonna go back and say, you gotta take all this out and put something new in.
Yeah, but we're not building it here, we're simply taking away his obligation to have to get a permit.
Yeah, but he's trying to use that as an example.
Yeah, I'm not trying to hear...
I think you asked if we had already removed the trees, that sounds like that would have been easier.
Well, then, no, that wouldn't have been easier, then you would have been fine, so...
You would pay $500 a tree on top of what it would pay to have the tree removed.
So...
I feel like there's gotta be a way for us to...
Again, I'd...
Bottom line is, he has got trees.
A billion trees.
I agree. It's not an issue, it's not, I don't think it's an issue of can he do what he wants to do, it's just a matter of following the procedure, and the procedure that we've, yeah, Mr. Gualtney?
Could we vote to rescind the tree ordinance, make the approval?
Oh, my gosh.
And then, I mean, I'm talking all in one motion tonight, essentially. I mean, just procedurally, we check the boxes we need to check, so...
No, 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 no.
Oh, that's probably what we're gonna do, public hearing, sorry. I was thinking back to zoning the ordinance.
Yeah, no, that one's not an option.
It's an ordinance, that's right, never mind.
Okay.
Public hearing.
Yeah, credit for creativity, but...
Do my best.
So, at the very least, these items need to be handled consistently, so if...
I mean...
I don't know a way to handle 08-11-21 the way that we did and not handle 09-11-21 the same way.
Okay. I'm going down Andy's path here, can we go back and change our mind on 08-11? I know that's not probably the most expeditious thing to do, but then treat them all the same?
Is 08-11...
And approve it based on the old ordinance? I mean, I know that's...
Our next item is also the same thing.
Yeah.
So...
They're dropping it.
Is the process complete on 08-11-21?
We can break, I can break that down.
But has the process, the full process?
No, 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 they have...
Because Mr. Gunnell's process is complete, right?
Correct.
They had done the application and all of that.
So, yes, if you want to make a motion to reconsider 08-11-21, and the council wants to do that, and make the distinction as to the filing date versus the removal of the trees, then we can do that legally, you know, whether our approval means anything is a risk that the homeowner may have to take, but...
Yeah, but I'm looking at Walter because he's my, he's my prosecutor.
We can do that.
Yeah, it just... Yeah.
But what's the... We just didn't think ahead to this transitional period.
Correct, that's the problem.
We should have basically said until all existing tree permits are cleared, we will throw out the old...
Correct, yeah, these are the only ones that we will see.
And what's the, what's the... If we do go back and reconsider, what's the, who's, because we're the authority, so who's gonna, what would the problem be? Who's gonna do anything about it?
I don't know that anyone would do anything.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
What if he just cuts the trees down, then he's before us to levy the fines, and then we waive the fines?
Well...
Due to the gray area between the two ordinances? I'm just thinking outside the box.
Sure.
Trying to get this moving along.
I'll be honest with you, I think I'd rather reconsider 08-11-21 than to create an absolution of the fines, so...
Yeah, because...
That's the only way we can do this.
I mean, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider 08-11-21.
And I'll second that.
All right, motion by Ms. Gier, second by Ms. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
And that is a motion by Ms. Smith and a second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also nine to zero.
So are we doing a resolution, you guys?
Do we have a resolution?
Yep, we are.
So 21-177?
21-177.
177.
Okay.
Correct.
Yes.
So 08-11-21 is approved with Resolution 21-177. All right, so that brings us back to 09-11-21. We've already closed the public hearing.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualtney, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero, and is 21-178. You are now approved.
Thank you for your efforts. We have been at Dawson since '88, but we've been best of your residents, and I did not have the pleasure of going for their counsel, and this was a...
New experience.
...back with us to logic.
There won't be one more, I'll meet you outside.
All right, next item, 10-11-21, public hearing set for tonight for removal of six protected trees at 908 Shades Road as required by the Tree Conservation Ordinance Number 2422, brought to us by Leslie Anastasia and Scott Cook, a report from special issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, this item was actually requested to be dropped by the applicant, but since the public hearing had already been set, we are obligated to open that public hearing, but I'm planning to move to drop as soon as that is...
Okay, so I will open the public hearing, ask if there's anyone to speak for or against this item, since there's not, I'll close the public hearing.
Move to drop.
Second.
Motion to drop by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualtney, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero.
Thank you.
Dropped. Thank you, Mr. Cook. All right, next item, 11-11-21, public hearing set for December 6, 2021, at 6:00 PM for consideration to rezone 1832 25th Court South from I-2 to NPD. App can is Trent Beasley, owner of HBI LLC, to permit the renovation of an existing non-conforming single-family house. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of six to zero with a favorable recommendation of the rezone, as brought to us by Wyatt Pu, so we will carry that item over and have the public hearing on December 6. All right, next item, 27-10-21, bid opening that was held on November 15, 2021, at 4:40 PM for camera system, brought to us by Chief Ross, our police chief, and Mayor McCleskey, and we'll start with a report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the finance committee met Monday, November 15, and voted five to zero to recommend accepting the bid from the only bidder we had, which is the lowest responsible and responsible bidder, Phlox Safety, they're five cameras, and the total amount is, let's see, $12,500 for the first year and then $12,500, so it'd be a total of $13,750, so five to zero coming out of finance.
All right, so...
Walter, that didn't add up, $12,500, $12,500, or $250?
There were five cameras at $12,500. Let's see, hold on a second.
$13,750 first year, $12,500 the next year.
Okay, yeah, that's right. Yeah, so ongoing, it'll be $12,500, you just have that additional $12,500 in the first year.
All right, so we have a motion from finance, any questions or comments? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero, and is ordinance 21-179. All right, next item, 01-11-21, bid opening set for December 20, 2021, at 4:31 for mowing landscaping of state right-of-way areas in Homewood, brought to us by Berkeley Squires. We will carry this over for that public hearing on the 20th. Next item, 03-11-21, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Sane Associates for professional engineering design services for a sidewalk project on Mecca Avenue, brought to us by Cale Smith, and another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the committee met and voted five to zero to recommend this item, the funding is $42,100.
All right, so we have a motion from finance, any other questions or comments? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero, and be Resolution 21-180. Next item, 04-11-21, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Shoal Engineering for professional engineering design services for a stormwater project on Kennelworth Drive, also brought to us by Cale Smith, our city engineer, and another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the committee met, voted five to zero to recommend this item, the funding on this is $37,700.
All right, we have a motion from finance, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero, and will be Resolution 21-181. Next item, 16-11-21, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract and to remit fiscal year 21-22 budget appropriations to the Birmingham Zoo, brought to us by Robert Brigitte, our finance director, and Melody Salter, our city clerk, and another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, we heard from Jenny Whitman, the CFO for Birmingham Zoo, and we voted five to zero to recommend authorizing the contract and allowing the mayor to negotiate the terms of said contract, so five to zero coming out of finance.
All right, so we have a motion from finance, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that is also nine to zero, and will be Resolution 21-182. All right, next item, bid opening held on November 12, 2021, at 2:01 PM for the Old Montgomery Highway Project, brought to us by Cale Smith, our city engineer, and another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the committee met, voted five to zero to recommend rejecting the sole bidder and negotiating with the approval funding up to $414,000, also to authorize the mayor to sign the contract, so five to zero of finance.
All right, we have another motion from Finance, any questions or comments? Mr. Sims?
Yes, just a follow-up question for Cale or whoever would choose the answer. I believe, Cale, you were gonna have a follow-up meeting to negotiate that price, I was just wondering if you're able to do that already?
Yes, he has.
He has.
That's fantastic. So, so.
Come on up.
See if you could just update from that meeting.
Yes.
I just want to confirm, it came under that four fourteen?
It, yes, it is that four fourteen. I haven't received the contract, I thought I was gonna receive it on Friday for the mayor design tonight, but we haven't gotten it yet, and it's, this is a short week. Apparently people don't work this week. But, yeah, it's a, it will not be any higher than four fourteen, and it will probably be right here on that, on that number.
Thanks so much, that's.
While you're up here, my friend at Covenant asked if, did y'all still need access?
I have not, yeah, that's on me. I haven't called him yet, because I wanted to make sure, because I figured I would get a lot of questions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
From him about it, about the schedule and all that stuff, and I wanted to go ahead and get done under construction and see their schedule and all that, and then we'll call him and work out.
Okay, all right, I'll just tell, I'll just text her and tell her that you're planning on doing that after we get the contract, taking care of it. All right, perfect.
And from that aspect, you said get done under construction, I think.
You meant contract, I think, you meant contract, right?
Under contract?
Yes.
And what is the timeline for their construction, or is it about six to eight weeks out, or?
For when they start, they hope to mobilize in the next three weeks before, before the holidays, before the end of the year. Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero, and will be resolution twenty-one one eighty-three. Next item, oh six eleven twenty-one, request to, request for consideration of resolution requesting the Alabama Legislature to authorize two entertainment districts, one in West Homewood Business District and one in Edgewood Business District, brought to us by Councilors Waltney, Alamon, and Wolverton, and we will start with a report from Public Safety, Mr. Waltney.
Yes, the committee met on November fifteenth and voted to approve this motion five to zero. The motion was made by Counselor Jones and seconded by Counselor Harden.
All right, so we have a motion.
Wait a, wait a second, I think it was approved four to one instead of five to zero.
It was four to one. Thank you, Ms. Gier.
All right, so we have a motion from Public Safety, any questions or comments?
I have comments.
Yes, Ms. Gier.
So, since the neighborhood has reached out in a lot of ways over the last week, I do think it's important to just express what I've heard in a nutshell. The Edgewood Business District is a lot of things to a lot of folks who eat and shop there, but for the adjacent neighborhood, this area is a kid and family hangout. It's all, it's the, it's the neighborhood gathering spot, it's for dogs and ice cream and strollers and dinner with the family, that's, that's how the neighbors use it. It's very personal to them, and they have expressed strongly to me that while they understand the issue of the open container and that we need to figure that out, generally speaking, they're not in favor of an entertainment district. They certainly are not fearful of some of the things we see online about, you know, what might, what might come, but they also believe that we can't with all certainty say that an entertainment district won't bring more bars and that sort of business to the area, and for that reason, the neighbors are generally opposed to the idea of an entertainment district. They'd like for us to just, you know, get a little more creative about how to solve the open container problem. They've heard us compared to Mountain Brook and those villages, they, they don't feel like the Edgewood Business District is similar to any of those, any of those areas. And also, they, they want me to stress that unless you live right beside this area, you don't understand the volume of children and young people who flow through here daily. It's really one of the few fun places in town that parents with older elementary kids and middle school kids and young high school kids even allow their kids to go and hang out unattended. Once again, they, they understand that being able to have a margarita outside is a nice thing, we'd like to be able to keep it in a very contained area if possible, but they feel like an entertainment district, just, you know, entertainment districts are districts that are designated to bring, you know, more entertainment, more bars, more restaurants to an area, and they'd like us to reconsider and not request Edgewood as an entertainment district, so I'd like to just speak for them, thanks a lot.
Thank you, and, and I do want to acknowledge, and I think she's here, Lacey Middleton, sent us a couple of emails and, along with some signatures, on a petition that Ms. Salter has and has been entered into the record. Unlike an ordinance that would actually create an entertainment district, this is just a resolution because it just requests the authority from the Alabama Legislature, so it's a little bit different than an actual approval, so I raised that just to explain why, why it's a resolution tonight and not an ordinance. I, I will just mention this, I, I do think that that's, first of all, an important distinction to make, is that what, what we're doing with this resolution is simply asking the Alabama Legislature to grant the authority to approve this. If they were to do that, it would have to come back here, and we would have to start that process at some point if we choose to, to actually approve this, which would involve public input and, and, and quite frankly, a public hearing along, because it is an ordinance. I will, just, as a point of clarification, and just, just from my opinion, Ms. Gier, you mentioned that an entertainment district encourages bars and things like that, I, I personally view it a little bit differently, and what, what this actually, in my opinion, the reason this issue came up is because we, we do have areas where, quite frankly, that same neighborhood and community is out there enjoying a margarita out, out in front or in the common area in the middle there, and, and I think that we want to ensure that we are protecting the ability to do that, not to change the, the neighborhood in any way or that, or that area. I don't know that an entertainment district actually encourages that. Entertainment district is a name that the legislature came up with, and I would be the first to acknowledge that's a bit of a misnomer for what we're talking about here. All that an entertainment district does is it allows licensees within that district to apply for a different kind of license, where they, they can allow alcohol to go outside their door within a certain distance. So, so anyway, just that point of clarification, anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I, I'd like to ask, let's pretend that we go down this road and, as Ms. Middleton's concerns become reality and the Homewood Police said, we've got problems here, and we, can we undo it, number one?
Yes.
And then if we did undo it, would it undo both that and the West Homewood one at the same time? Is that, they tied together, or how's that work?
They would not, so the only reason they're tied together at this point is so that the legislature can act on it is one thing, they would have to come back, and I would say probably would be passed by separate ordinances at that point, and yes, the, any ordinance, it's an ordinance just like anything else, it could be undone at any point if the council wishes to undo it. Mr. Sims?
Yes, I just wanted to make two comments, one is, one, I would appreciate the opportunity to possibly carry this over tonight for future and ongoing discussion with the community, because I've had quite a number of comments this weekend, and what I don't want to do is pass a resolution that then puts it on a state legislature to introduce this bill, and we send unresolved, ongoing concerns of our residents to that state legislature to then handle, so I think more time to talk it through with the community would be a good thing. There are some residents who, talking through what we're trying to achieve, have obtained understanding and have less concerns about it, there's others who are still looking for more problem solving along the way, and, and I, I saw one this afternoon where I actually forwarded it to Mr. Kendrick, where I'd like some clarification, which is really from, from a lot of the consideration, it seems like the Edgewood District, the goal would be to basically between, say, Sam's and Taco Mama, have that public space be available for those restaurants to use as a seating area and for alcohol to be consumed. It seemed like from the administrator of the ABC Board that there's an opportunity through an agreement with the city that, that a business could do that, and then they could also add that once that agreement's in place to their license, and therefore being able to use that seating area and alcoholic beverages be served outside without it being an entertainment district. So just looking at considerations like that before we move forward, as well as additional opportunity for just talking to the public, you know, our residents, about what this does and doesn't do, so that when we, if we do move forward with the resolution again, we've handled that public process at the local level and not, you know, something that goes to the state. That being said, if there are two different trajectories for West Homewood and Edgewood, since a lot of, I mean, I'm primarily receiving comments from Edgewood, and I, you know, if, if we want to separate those two on their trajectories, you know, we could still add a second entertainment district without, and that second one doesn't require, you know, resolution from the state legislature, and then if we find that Edgewood could actually have one through this other arrangement of actually just an agreement with the restaurants, and that seating area being added to the license of each business, then I think that would be a compromise where we kind of reach something that's a win-win without having, even having to go to the state, so that's just what I wanted to vocalize, and if somebody has more information, I mean, I'd love to hear it, but that's, that's what I've found based on just talking to people this past weekend and the week prior.
Mr. Jones?
I would just say that I think there's a misunderstanding of what, what we're voting on tonight. We're not voting to establish the districts, we're really just asking for the ability to put it on the agenda and then work out all the details. I respectfully disagree with you that, I mean, we, we can work out all the details, if you, if there's a great idea to just do that between those two businesses, and I'm fine with that, but this is just the process to allow us to then bring it back and have public comment, and then come up with creative ideas on how we want to do it, we've already changed the, the lines and everything, so that's just my thought, is that we, we can't do anything until we handle this, in my opinion. We get approval to then establish it, then we go, then we go into, you know, discussion about how we're gonna accomplish it, so that's just my, those are my thoughts. And one other quick thing is that, that the zoning is what dictates what is allowed in the district, and Mayor McCloskey and I were proud when we established the Edgewood Urban Revitalization District, and similar to like the Greensprings Revitalization District, it limits those type of things, so this has nothing to do with what type of business would go into the district, and so I just want to point out, point that out, and then I feel like we even have stricter controls with the, the urban, the Edgewood Urban Revitalization District.
Okay.
So, just a couple of thoughts.
And I just have one additional thought.
Yeah, Ms. Smith?
I know that Crestline has used their entertainment district status, and I kind of disagree with it not being similar, because I feel like of all the neighborhoods and all the villages in Mountain Brook, Crestline is the one that is, to me, most similar to Edgewood, because there's an elementary school right there, there are residences right behind those businesses.
Same thing.
And they have used their, their entertainment district status to be able to have public events for the city, they have movies in the park over in front of the library, they've had the symphony in the park in front of the library, they have Ode's Fest every year in the parking lot out in the middle of those Crestline businesses, and it allows the businesses to, those licensees that are in that area, to sell alcohol to people who are enjoying the movie or going to the concert or whatever, and be able to take those beverages out into the parking lot without risking violating their, their licenses. And I don't know if everybody's aware, but the ending of the We Love Homewood Day Parade and the Street Fest is in the middle of Edgewood. Every time we have it, now, we didn't have it for one year because of COVID, but that's where the party, that's where the street fest, that's where the band is, all those restaurants typically are packed with people, people are going in, I know at one point somebody set up a little stand outside on the, the sidewalk, a New York Pizza Dead selling pizza, and I think it's to make events like that not have those business owners risk, you know, violating their licenses by allowing people to take alcohol off their premises, which is what their licenses allow them to do currently. I mean, I, I just think that there's other items to consider, and I do feel like we have seen this work in other places, it's working right now here, and we haven't seen those issues that I saw some people talking about online, so I just think that, that there's other things to consider, and I do want to protect our business owners who are doing a wonderful job, and, and I think are very much a vital part of that community and a part of that neighborhood, and just want to make sure that they're not gonna get in trouble for things that could easily be solved.
Okay, so we have a motion from the committee that we, we have to deal with before anything else, so unless there are any other questions or comments, I would ask, all in favor?
Aye. No.
Hang on. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so I hear two no's unless someone tells me otherwise. Seven to two, and that will be resolution twenty-one one eighty-four. All right, next, that brings us to the committee referral agenda, I would.
Mr. President, real quick.
Yeah, Mr.
I have a question about the referral agenda.
Yes.
There was an item that I had requested last Wednesday to be added, and I, I apologize that I did not notice it when we, when y'all approved the amended agenda, this was for the Oxmore property, the reduction in price for the Oxmore property due to the sewer
You're right, and I missed that as well.
And I apologize, I didn't catch it at the beginning.
Ms. Salter?
I just want to make sure it gets added.
Are we on number thirty?
Yeah, it'll be, because the other two that we have, it's the old numbers.
Yeah, okay. So this will be thirty eleven twenty-one, Mr. Mayor's request for consideration of?
For, it's, so I will read you my, my request.
Yeah, perfect.
Consideration for reduction of sale price for Oxmore Road property, that's three oh seven, correct, three oh seven Oxmore Road property due to Jefferson County sewer issues.
Okay, and that'll go to Finance?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Three oh seven to three fifteen. Yeah, this, yeah, so.
And I think I neglected to say earlier, twenty-nine eleven twenty-one will go to Public Works, because that's work, requesting work in the right of way.
Thank, thank you.
No, thank you, I apologize for not being on.
That's okay.
All right, so with that amendment and the earlier one, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended committee referral agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nelms, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero. All right, so that brings us to other new business, first item, twenty-five eleven twenty-one, request to set a bid opening date for two police Harley-Davidson motorcycles, brought to us by Chief Ross and Corporal Self. We are going to set that bid opening for December sixth at five thirty, or five thirty-one, I guess.
Well, the bids, you said a bid at four thirty.
Four thirty. Okay. So the bids will be due at four thirty, and we'll do the bid opening at five thirty? All right.
We said all the bids at four thirty, because normally, you also need that.
Got it. All right, next item, twenty-six eleven twenty-one, request to set a public hearing for consideration of offense setback variance on a lot with two front yards to reduce the required setback from fifteen feet to zero feet at thirty-one oh one Roxbury Road, brought to us by Joey Miller, the homeowner, and Wyatt Pugh of our Inspections and Permits Department. We will set that public hearing for December twenty at six P.M. Next item, twenty-seven eleven twenty-one, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of November nine, twenty twenty-one, through November twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, brought to us by Robert Brigitte, our finance director, and Melody Salter, our city clerk. Mr. Jones, you still up?
I'm still up, yeah, until the end of the year, so I reviewed that, Mr. Brigitte answered several questions, so I got all the, all those answers, I would move for approval of the vouchers for November ninth through today, the twenty-second.
All right, so we have a motion for approval from Mr. Jones, second from Ms. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just one eighty-five, I think.
It is. Resolution twenty-one one eighty-five, and that's nine to zero. Next item, twenty-eight eleven twenty-one, request to authorize the mayor to sign contract for temporary construction easement for striping changes at the public's entrance of Greensprings Highway, brought to us by Berkeley Squires, our Public Works Director. This was put on other new business, quite frankly, so that it could happen as quickly as possible, for some of the striping out on, out on Greensprings, so if anyone's got any questions about it, otherwise I would entertain, thank you. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Waltney, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is twenty-one one eighty-six, and is nine to zero. All right, our last two items are related, the first is thirteen ten twenty-one, which is, forgive me. Yeah.
It's Lancaster, isn't it?
Yeah, so we are, that's to amend the bid opening date for Lancaster Sidewalk Project to December seventeen, twenty twenty-one, and Cale actually corrected me from what I said earlier, that one is at two ten P.M. They, they were out there looking at it today with the contractors and the, both of these projects, with contractors and our consultant, they felt like they needed a little more time to go back and, and look at a couple of things, so they asked us to push off that date until the seventeenth.
When you say they, are you talking about us? Are you talking about Cale and his staff?
I'm talking about, I'm talking about Cale, the contractor, and, and Clark.
Okay.
All were in agreement that it needed to be pushed off a little bit, because there were a couple of things that they were concerned about and wanted some time to look into it before giving us a number.
And just because we have to stamp, make the bids, are we taking bids till two oh nine, or when are we taking bids to? Because we have to stamp, make sure they got them in by time.
How about, how about we bring them in, that they have to be in by two o'clock?
Two o'clock?
Yeah.
Is that what, is that what he's gonna put on the bid specs or whatever? Is that what, is that what he's going to put on the bids specs or whatever?
And what date are you pushing it to?
17th, December 17th.
Huh?
Yeah, it'll be 2 o'clock.
All right, I'll just have to give him, make sure that-
Yeah, just make sure he's, he's planning on opening them at 2:10. So I think 2 o'clock should work fine, but if you'll just confirm that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero, okay. Last item, same thing with Salter, is 14, 10, 21, is to move to the bid opening to December 17, 2021, to be opened at 2:01 PM.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gualtney, all in favor?
Aye.
And that is also nine to zero and that will be-
I'm sorry, and what was time, was that going to be?
They're due by 2 o'clock, they'll be opened at 2:01.
So the other one's 2:10 and 2:00 and this one's 2:01?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, so that is the, brings us to the end of the agenda. Mr. Mayor, you've got any comments tonight?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few comments tonight. One, I want to thank Berkeley Squires and Melody and Robert and everybody who had a hand in last week's Thanksgiving luncheon that we had at the senior center. Unfortunately, again, they were not able to have that for the, for the staff at the schools. I know this will be the last year hopefully and we can start going back to the elementary schools. I know that's such a, such a fun event for all of you and for all of the employees for the city of Homewood to be able to go into the elementary schools, so we look forward to doing that. But again, thank you to everybody that put that on and thank you to the council members that were there for serving. That's always good to see from the employee standpoint that the council is willing to help out in something that's honoring them and giving thanks for their hard service during the year. Secondly, Christmas parade, of course, is coming up on December 7. This year's going to be a little different of, since, well, it's certainly going to be different than last year. Thank goodness. I know, I know the people that were, that were trying to travel down to Oxmoor last year during the parade are very thankful we're doing it the way we're doing it, going back to normal, but we are doing it a little different this year. I have decided, and I think this is a good thing, that we're going to start doing every year a residential lighting of the Christmas star on 18th Street. So it will be done by a resident and not by the mayor. And so I think this year it is going to be incredibly fitting that I have asked and they have agreed that the Graffos family will do the lighting of the star this year at the Christmas parade. So they are very humbled by it, but also very excited as well, so I think that's a true testament. We know how much, how much Sammy was Homewood. So I think that's a wonderful thing and this will be something that we'll do every year from now on, so. And then I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Hopefully you guys will have some great time with your, with your friends and family. And, oh yeah, and remind me the day.
Monday, September, or November 29.
Monday, November 29th, we're also going to be doing a menorah lighting as well, so hopefully everybody can come out to that and thank you for Counselor Sims and you can certainly speak to it when it gets to your turn. But again, thank you so much, everybody, for your, for your service this year. Spend some wonderful time with your family this week, so thanks. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just for purposes, I'm going to let Mr. Sims talk about the lighting, but for purposes of setting the committees, that's at 5 o'clock, so we'll do the first committee at 5:30 so that everyone can attend that if they want to. So Mr. Jones, you'll get, you'll get 5:30 for finance.
I'll get 5:30.
Or Ms. Smith will get finance at 5:30, but so with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Gualtney.
How long do you need for finance?
We, uh, I could, 30. 30.
I could, 15 minutes.
15 minutes.
All right, so we'll set public safety for 5:45, for, I'm only going to set it for 10 minutes because we just have the update for the property up on Berry.
Yeah.
So 5:55 would be the next meeting.
Yours would be 5:55?
Um, 5:45, but for only 10 minutes.
Yeah.
So 5:55 is the third slot.
That's fine.
That's right.
5:55 for public safety?
Public safety will be 5:45?
5:45.
And then the next slot after public safety, whichever committee wins.
So you only need five minutes because you're starting, what is your start minute? Five, 5:30?
No, we're doing 5:30. 5:30 to 5:45 for finance, 5:45 to 5:55 for public safety.
Y'all kill me with these weird times.
Keep peeing your toes. I'll be brief, the only thing I was going to mention was the Thanksgiving luncheon was really nice. I was glad to see it return this year. Enjoyed the time getting to socialize with the city employees and other counselors that were there as well. I would also like to add that I'm excited about the Christmas parade, just good, hopefully we get to throw some candy this year. Melody has us dress up in funny outfits, so it's always a good time.
Humor continues when you see the flag. But I do have a creative partner that I'm kicking ideas off to one of y'all and I'm very unsure that it will be accepted with humorous situation. I'm a doll.
I'm happy to drop off my children anytime to help decorate that flag. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gualtney. Ms. Gere?
Just happy Thanksgiving to everyone and I did notice that Brian Collins, Chair of the Arts Council, had posted something that they'll be accepting admissions to their Christmas decoration, best Christmas decorations or holiday decorations that they're going to have a week or so until December the 3rd. If you've got a picture of somebody's front yard or a church scene, or he even sent a tacky sweater, so Berry, maybe when you get your tacky sweater, we'll take a picture. Send it in, they're going to-
I'll make sure it's in there.
They're going to have a, they're going to have an exhibit down on the art hall on the first floor, so they're looking for entrance, so thanks a lot.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Sims?
Thank you, I just wanted to follow up on the mayor's comments about the menorah lighting on Monday, November 29th at 5:00 PM. That's going to be near the intersection of 29th Avenue and 18th Street downtown. So right, right in that same area in front of Track Shop where the Christmas tree is now, it's going to be in that same space. And also thanks to the mayor for allocating $5,000 in the holiday lighting budget this year for the beautification board to utilize for new decorations. Part of those are in the first floor right now at City Hall and those Christmas trees look great. And also part of it is also the menorah that will be placed as well as, you know, the celebration on Monday. So thanks to everyone for, you know, setting time aside before committees to participate in that and thanks for the partnership again from the beautification board, the mayor and Kent Haynes for originally suggesting this opportunity and bringing it forward. Thanks so much, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Sims, I still remember the sloth. And that, you know, certain things during COVID, you're just never going to forget and we literally were up there three hours standing, waving at people and it just, I don't know, it's just an amazing memory, but we went through a lot. But thank you for the luncheon, that was really good and I had so many employees that, you know, just thanked us for, you know, having them over and, you know, we appreciate all the employees and we have so many things in which to be thankful. So it's, hopefully it's a great week for everybody and I'll miss you next week, so I just have to go to New York for some things, so you're capable hands, so that's, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I'm going to jump on the thanking Berkeley and Melody and Robert for making the employee luncheon happen. We got to serve the food and it was really good. It was really good for two men and a pig, I'll shout them out, they did a great job. So that was, that was a really fun way to celebrate our employees and show them how much we appreciate their service. Since Andy's going to be done at 5:55, I guess I will schedule special issues for 5:55 and to get Melody back on a normal schedule, I'll set till, I'll just say I'm going to do 35 minutes even though that might be a little much.
Mr. President, are you setting for Mr. Gualtney?
Okay. Yeah, after, after I set it, he gets to go last.
Are they going to make Miss Andrews go last?
No.
I don't think I have anything.
Oh, do you not have anything?
I don't think I have anything. Now, you had to set one thing last time to see. Looking.
Check and make sure you don't have anything new.
I don't, I don't see anything.
Yeah, all right, okay. All right, so I'll just set mine for 35 minutes to get you back to a normal number, so you can, you can put it down till 6:30. And everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nelms?
I just want to say thanks to everyone. I am thankful for you guys and our constituents and wanted to just remind everybody that, you know, we're here for our entire community. We all have seasons where we kind of have to focus on certain things depending on the age of our children or our age and what have you, but just in general, we all have seasons for making an impact on our community and it's all welcome and I'm thankful for it and thankful for all of you and our council. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Ms. Andrus?
So not setting P and D. I hated to miss last Thursday, I was on a panel discussion at Cumberland School of Law that I had committed to before and otherwise I never would have missed it, so I really hated that I had to miss that. I look forward to that every year and we've got some smooth roads in Ward 5, Yorkshire, Ramson and Windsor, the portions that the waterworks have worked on has been, have been paved. Spire is going to come back and do where Spire was, so Hampton, parts of Windsor, Durham. So our road's still kind of a mess, but they're making progress. And then I want to thank Berkeley for paving Lancaster east of 31. And then we've got, I think, Poncyana North, Devon down by Brookwood, Warwick, I think, and Edge Hill are up next, so it's, it's working, we're moving, so just, anyway, something to be thankful for, for Thanksgiving. And that's all I've got, thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harden?
Well, I'm, like Ms. Andrus, I had every, every expectation to come to the lunch Thursday and I had a work emergency that I couldn't get around and was very frustrated by the end of the day that I didn't get to make that lunch, so, but anyway, I am always thankful for all the hard work that everybody puts into this council. I think it's sometimes hard for everybody to understand what all we do behind the scenes, much less just out here, to really get to the point where we can vote on things and understand things. So I'm grateful for you guys and all you do.
Thank you very much. So first, I will set public works for 6:30. Andrew will be excited. And next, I also had to miss the employee luncheon, I was out of town doing depositions, I hated to miss it because that is one of, I think, everybody's favorite events of the year, so I'm sorry to miss that, but glad to hear that it went so well. And then lastly, I'll just join the chorus of everybody else. I think we have a lot to be thankful for in Homewood. I think that we live in a remarkable city and with a lot of things that, you know, quite frankly, other people don't get in their cities. And so I'm thankful for that and I'm thankful for all of you. I agree with Mr. Harden, the amount of work that everyone on this council puts in is tremendous and I appreciate the way you handle your work, I appreciate the way you go about your work, I appreciate the way we can discuss items and disagree with them and not be adversary, not be confrontational with each other, but to advocate for that which we believe is right. So I appreciate everyone, everyone for that and for the work you do and for another year to get to work with each of you. So with that, we will adjourn this meeting and we will be back in two weeks. Everyone have a happy Thanksgiving.